Welcome everyone, welcome to the Board of Fire Commissioners, South King Fire. Today is March 26th. All members are present except Commissioner Fuller, he is excused today. So it's called the order, pledge allegiance. Last one on the table is Commissioner Burris, so guess what? You have. Thank you. Item on our agendas, item number three, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on February 27th and special meeting of March 4th, so I have to take motions for those separately. Anyone have a motion for the approval for the regular meeting on February 27th?
I move approval.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Gates, sir, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Medina. Any other discussion on those minutes? All those with favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. I need a motion for the special meeting minutes, March 4th.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Burris, there's a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Medina. Any other discussion now at this time? So all those favors, special meaning for to approve the special meeting minutes of March 4th, say aye. Aye. Thank you. unanimous, we have approval for both the minutes for regular meeting and special meeting for March 4th. Now, item number four, commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner Gates.
No way, no comments, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gates. Commissioner Medina.
I don't have anything either, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burris.
I think this is the right time to say it. I attended my first JLM a couple of weeks ago, and I was really, really happy with it. Everyone was super professional, willing to compromise, productive. It was kind of exactly what I was kind of hoping to see. It may be not the right time for us to discuss it, but there was, there was talk about a retreat coming up, and I would like to explore what the other commissioners think, what administration thinks of, is that something that commissioners should, should be part of?
But you're asking a question?
Yeah, sure, if, if we can do that now, sure.
All right, so for clarification too, for my comments, the keep in the decorum of the commissioners, please, to be recognized, to take the, take the floor, please be recognized by the chair. So are there any comments right now from the board or from the public? I'll take them from the board if all. Mr. Gates.
Is this a retreat involving admin labor commissioners? Or just commissioners?
It's admin labor, I believe.
I probably can't explain it very well, but I think at the present time, I think the retreat should just be labor and management, no commissioners at the present time.
Steve, do you have any comment? I'm, you're smiling, so I'm thinking you want to say something.
Well, the, the intent of the retreat has really been to focus on the relationship between the admin staff and the union leadership, and it's taken us a while, it's been a work in progress to find a, a team building consultant. The recommendation from the board when we started down this path was to not involve the commissioners so that there could be lots of honest and open feedback without, for lack of a better term, anyone judging what was being shared. So the intent was for it to just be labor and management, and that's kind of the path we've gone down. Labor's agreed to, to pay their half as far as like if we did something offsite for room and board or meals, and we would pay our portion as well. We can certainly pivot if that's the will of the board, but the intent was for the union and the, and the admin to have a chance to have some good honest discussion guided by a third party to come up with some strategies for building trust and rebuilding the relationship.
Am I changed my mind? You said room and board, where are you thinking of going?
Do misbeg, sir.
Yeah. Commissioner Burris.
It was just a question, I really just wanted honest input, I'm not strong on one way or the other.
Okay, any other questions? We haven't seen that, we're going to move on to item number five, public comments. Anyone from the public, please state your name and address for the record. All your three minutes or less, anyone from the public. Online? All right, thank you. Item number six, down to Commissioner Committee Report, so. Burris, that would have been a good place for that. It's okay. So any other Commissioner, Commissioner Committee Reports, any other Commissioner Committees meet? None, okay. Ready, thank you. We're down to item number seven, so Commissioner Committee Assignments. The question is, is all our commissioners had a chance to take a look at their assignment?
I think it looks a whole lot better than what we saw last month, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner Gates. So I just want to comment on the last part, if anyone's seen that. The alternating on the white labor Management Committee there, if you notice, two commissioners there, one's alternate if they don't show up, but I've kind of rotated, so one bishop would stay on for the second meeting and then rotate out of there from there. Then alternate would come in and move up, move up from there. The Culture Engagement Committee, I have Director Stevens still working on that, thank you. Also, we have to draft some of that language to go to guidelines that we have with the other. So, any other comments?
Um, yes, Commissioner. On the Culture Committee.
Yes.
You know, I think once you get your stuff put together, then I think that needs to go to the Policy and Procedures Committee and get their input and their recommendation and then come back to the board to vote on this.
Agreed, and that's what I was just going to comment on, on the Policy and Procedure Committee. That's an important committee to come through, probably meet. We have to talk about our guidelines, we have to talk about exactly what Commissioner Gates talks about. We just want to make sure that everything's in line and that we need to get kind of started on that. I feel that some of the guidelines are, are kind of old, they need to be updated. I know they were updated before, but we want to make sure that they're in line with everything else we're trying to do, and especially with coming in our policies. Some of them, to me, in my opinion, you know, almost look like bylaws. And so we just kind of had to tighten that up a little bit. I mean, there's a lot of things in there that I've seen. And I subsequently had a talk with the chief about our packets and no mailboxes in the station. So, and I know there's a reason for that, and I know we're trying to work through that because I know there's a lot of, there aren't really mailboxes around. But that's the kind of thing we need, the Policy and Procedure Committee needs to kind of look at, tighten up, if you could. And it's a body of work right now to get that going, so. Any other comments since Commissioner? Okay. Thank you. We're down to item number eight, and Commissioner Fires? Do we have to approve? The assignments? Commissioner Committee's assignments, or do we have to approve the assignments?
Do you, so you intend to finalize the assignments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's get a motion to approve the assignments.
Thank you. All right, I will take a motion to approve the committee assignments at a stand.
I'll make a motion to approve the committee assignments.
First and second, from Commissioner Medina. Any other discussion on the committee assignments? Hearing none? All those with aye? Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, excuse me, item number eight, Commissioner Fire Station Visits Rules of Responsibility. This is on there because I think that I want to clarify something on those visits. So there's been a lot of talk, and I've been kind of waiting to get everything to make sure we talk about this. So when we're talking about the, the visits for the fire stations, we're not talking visits are, are just drop-ins. That wasn't the intent for that. The intent is to notify the chief to say, hey, we're coming. If you want to assign someone to us, we can, that's, that's great. That's what we want to do. It's, it's in, in thinking about how the commission works and how we should understand the culture of this fire department, especially those that don't come from here and don't have fire experience to be escorted in there by a chief, however you designate, we're fine with that. Now, not all the commissioners have to go, they don't feel like it, you know? But you feel that is welcome. There's things that we, we kind of look at like you just got the rescue three on that, right? For ours, our aspect as elected officials, I'm looking at to making sure that our, our resources are taken care of. Our men and women have what they need. If we buy something, if we want to buy something, a piece of new equipment, to be able to go into the station to see how it's used and how it will be used is something that's very important, at least to me. I'm going to open this discussion to the other commissioners as soon as I get done speaking on this. And so, and I know that our district attorney, Mr. Quinn, you know, in your, in your training, you talked about not being mushrooms. Information is, is fast, we can't, to me, as elected official can't do our job without, unless we have the information that we need to move forward. And like I said, it's, it's not dropping in, that's not what we're looking for. We're not just saying, hey, I popped in the door and here I am that day. No, the chief will know, we're lining this up with, with whoever's there, if the chief again wants to assign to someone. And I know that in the past, Commissioner Burger is gone, and other commissioners gone, so I want to make sure that that continues. And just again, understanding the culture and what we need to, to do our job. I will open up the floor to other commissioners to comment. Or Commissioner Burris.
This is something I feel really strongly about. Just getting over cold, so I apologize on the voice. Take a story back to 1991. I'm a probationary firefighter, working with Doug Waller at 65s. There's two people in this room that'll really understand this story in ways that unless you knew Doug, you wouldn't. So what seemed to me like an elderly guy walks up to the front door and rings the doorbell, so I answer, and I start trying to lead him to the chair where we take blood pressures. And Doug starts laughing his head off and says, hey, Burris, let me introduce you to Commissioner Martin. That was Bill Martin, he was a commissioner at the time. And of course, I thought I was going to get fired for that, but they both laughed. We sit around, we're drinking coffee, I don't even remember what we're talking about. We get a call, and Doug being Doug convinces Bill Martin to ride along with us. It's kind of an unusual call, we had to send the lady to the hospital, we had two young kids, one was like seven days old or something like that. And so we then sat there for about an hour and a half making calls to get somebody there to take care of the kids. And we got back to the station, and Commissioner Martin says, wow, I had no idea you guys did anything like that. And Doug being who Doug is, no filter, he just looked at him and said, you know, how the blank can you do your job of running a fire department if you don't know what firefighters do? And it always stuck with me, I don't know why, that was a long, long, long time ago. Fast forward to very recently, I understand that Commissioner Burger was a prolific station visitor. So we got 32 years at least of a history of commissioners visiting fire stations here. And I'm unaware of it ever causing any sort of problem. So when I got on the board, I was, I was really surprised to find out that there was some controversy over it all. So I go back to the basics, the RCWs are what, what conduct are conduct? I couldn't find anything in the RCWs that addressed anything like that. I went to the Commissioner Handbook, and there was nothing in there. What was there on page three, the role of the fire commissioners is to establish the policies and budgets of the district. I understand there's a lot of different types of policies. And, and we delegate the day-to-day stuff to the fire chief. I don't know exactly where the divisions would be. But it seems like if there, if there is a policy on commissioners, it seems like that needs to come from the commissioners, unless somebody can point to an RCW or something like that. And of course, we're going to do common sense with, with scheduling it and all that kind of stuff. I've been, I've heard a long list of reasons on why some people think it's a bad idea. There, I won't go through them all, I have them listed. But they all kind of assume that we don't have good judgment in our heads, that we can't make a decision of what is a proper thing to talk about versus something that as commissioners we should not delve into whatsoever. I find that kind of insulting, actually. Add to that this list of possible problems, well, in 33 years, none of those problems have ever occurred. So is it really a valid thing? In the end, fire commissioners can gain good information from visiting stations, talking to the firefighters, and more information equals better decisions. That's all.
Thank you. Comments? Okay. I guess, Quinn, do you want to, I think this is kind of like the direction that we were just kind of because, and like I said, in training, we talked about a little bit to the galli of it and perception. I think we all up here understand perception. And so, and I think that Commissioner Burris kind of hit a little bit there. I think it's a, you have to, again, we're elected, there's some trust here. And that's why I talked to the chief about it a little bit and said, hey, you know what? We're not coming in here unexpectedly, we're going to let you know. Again, if you assign someone to us, I'm fine with that, you know? And it's, and we're, I think it's just keeping everything above the board. But in the, the main portion is the fact that there are commissions and other stations and other departments where commissioners are welcomed. Some of them are, or if, if you're not familiar with the fire department at all, mandatory ride-alongs are, are great. They're assigned to that, and I'm, I'm happy with that, too. I understand that. Myself being from a department, a ride-along for another department is great. That way I get to see how they operate and what their SOBs, SOPs and SOGs are, right, and how they operate. And so they held that along. Again, I think it's very important that we talk to the membership and not about things that where we know we're not supposed to, but more on the lines of helping them get resources, helping us secure our budgets correctly, buying equipment that we need to make sure that they are used and what they need them for. This is very important to me because it's, it's more the community-based thing that we need to get to, to help the community out, to figure out what our firefighters need, whether it be here, whether in the city of Des Moines, things like that. So I think that's why this, this is, has come up, we want to make sure that we are serving the community appropriately.
Understood, understood, and I want to address one thing that Commissioner Burris mentioned. He mentioned the lack of a statute relating to fire station visits, and spot on, there's not a statute that says, Commissioner, thou shalt not visit fire stations. But I think I want to frame our discussion around what the statute says that a board of fire commissioners can do. Let's go back to the beginning and talk about what the statute says. Statute says that a board of fire commissioners is established to manage and conduct the business affairs of the department, to enter into any and all necessary contracts, to adopt reasonable rules and regulations. The commissioners are the lawmakers of the department. And I think we could kind of frame this in sort of a relay race of our respective authorities. The commissioners are kind of like the second, the second runner in relay race, on a relay team. The first runner are the voters. The voters pass the baton to the commissioners. And the third runner in the relay race is the chief. The commissioners pass the baton to the chief. Now, with what Commissioner Burris and Chair Berusso are saying about station visits and becoming informed, because again, Commissioner Berusso, you're not mushrooms, you're not mushrooms. You can create perceptions that runner two is going straight to runner four, i.e. administrative staff and the union, because that's runner number four in the relay race, is the administrative staff and the union. Now, I hear some whisperings today at this meeting of coordinating a visit with the chief in terms of visiting fire stations, I don't, I don't know about that, and I haven't been advised about that. What I will say is that if district visits occur without involvement of the chief of any kind, it looks like you're passing the baton to the wrong runner in that respect. Now, visiting stations to become informed, I don't take, I don't take issue with that if you do it with chief involvement. Because again, there's not a statute that says thou shalt not visit fire stations. But there is a statute that actually defines what a board of fire commissioners can do. Visiting fire stations is not one of those things. We kind of have to think about the bigger picture and who you are as an entity of commissioners. You are the policymakers, you're not the policy enforcers. So really, the Joint Labor Management Committee, that's very much a place where commissioners become informed. So it would be irregular for commissioners to only be informed by virtue of visiting fire stations. You just don't want to get into a situation where you're confused, because what Commissioner Burris mentioned earlier about the story from 1991, and this is not to say that your story is inapposite or irrelevant. We live in a different time where communication happens a lot faster than it did in 1991. And I'll give you some examples from present experience, particularly with respect to COVID, where one commissioner has a direct line of communication to a union representative, and the union representative is able to immediately text the commissioner and say that the mass made, mass mandate around here is BS, I have some ideas about how we could improve that. That's not going to happen in 1991. So we have, we're in different times, and that's not to say that your story is irrelevant. I think it's completely, it's completely indicative of your right, or as a commissioner, to be informed about what goes on at a department. But again, we start playing telephone a lot easier in 2024 than we did in 1991. Visiting fire stations, it's something that just because you can do something doesn't mean that you should do it. However, if you coordinate with the chief and you involve yourselves and clearly articulate what you would like to do for purposes of visiting a station, you are less likely to risk an appearance of undermining, an appearance of going around the authority of the fire chief or creating a crisis of confidence. Because back to my story earlier about the commissioner and the union rep that had a direct line of communication at that particular department, the fire chief board relationship was poisoned based upon that text alone and how quick those kinds of things can happen. Because if you start visiting fire stations and you create an expectation that you are here to listen to every single firefighter at the department, air your concerns to me, no matter what, you cross the line from managing the affairs of the department as a board of fire commissioners to one commissioner without statutory authority, who's getting direct communication from a member of a union, resulting in allegations, not factual, real, direct dealing violations of RCW 4156, the bargaining ones. You're putting yourselves in a position of an appearance of bias, putting yourselves in a position of an appearance of a lack of trust. That can happen if you start visiting stations, we're on a bit of a slippery slope. I hear that Commissioner Burger visited the stations. And yes, there's a history of visiting fire stations at this department as far as I have been made aware. That doesn't mean it's right, it doesn't mean it's wrong either. I just think we need to proceed cautiously, proceed with caution in terms of how the chief is involved in this. Because again, we are runners in a relay race. The voters are the first runner and they pass the baton to you. And I think if you go around the chief and pass the baton directly to administration or directly to the union, you're not going to finish the race, because the third runner wasn't even made aware of what the baton was being passed at all. You're creating problems if you go around each other like that. Now, to the extent the chief is going to be involved, I think the chief needs to be made aware of the substance of anything you are going to try to learn. And I think, as I mentioned at my training, do not make commitments of any kind when you are wearing your commissioner hat, if you're speaking with members of the department. If you go to the station and visit, you're creating an appearance that you are going to listen and you are going to grant requests. That's a problem for you as individual commissioners. And if there are problems for you as individual commissioners, you can create problems for the full board in terms of public perception. So there are risks to visiting the station, even if you do so with the consent of the fire chief, and you absolutely should do so with the consent of the fire chief as a matter of propriety and not passing the baton to the fourth runner and avoiding that kind of allegation that you're undermining the chief. With that, any questions? As I mentioned, there's a statute that defines what you do as a board of fire commissioners, but there's not one that defines what you do as individual commissioners. So there's not an awful lot of guidance. The Commissioner Handbook doesn't really teach you how to be a commissioner. It gives you the basic roles of the statute, but it doesn't guide you through the everyday because in many respects, you pass the baton to the fire chief to address the everyday. Those are my thoughts about visiting stations, it's a, it's a, just because you can doesn't mean you should. You should just make sure that the chief is involved and is a part of the process, frankly. And also, if you get to the station, be aware of the perception you may create by being there, not because the best intentions, and I hear what Commissioner Burris is saying, you have the best intentions? Goodness gracious. Commissioners that have had the best intentions have unintentionally created, created problems. Not because they intended to undermine the chief, it's, it's just the reality. What I've experienced and experience is the oracle of truth. What I've experienced is commissioners that are hungry to learn and hungry to get information about their department can create a crisis of confidence between them and the chief, despite their intentions. So those are my thoughts about that.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Absolutely. Again, it's not, like I said before, you are correct. No commissioner will go in there without the chief notification, and that's the intent. And to understand, and even to the point where the, the case of the content of what we want to talk about, what we're looking for, I want to put that in there. Now, I think we're smart enough up here to say to someone that wants to order us and say, we can't talk to you. I would expect our commissioners to say that. And I would, I would say to any, I mean, I was in that boat before too, where our commissioners came in. We knew not to speak about a lot of things to them. Now, that comes with education from the department and from the unit members. That I must trust on them. But with trust for here for our commissioners, not saying what they're supposed to, or not hearing things and saying things, I trust that, with them. And so back to the point of the station visits, with the chief knowing, and even assigning someone to us, I'm fine with that. Case in point, some, some departments make the commissioner fill out a form. And then a form can be what the contest is going to be, what their visit is for, what time they're going to go. And then the chief makes assignments of who goes with that person. I'm all great for that, I'm fine with that, really. And I understand everything, my perception, don't get me wrong, you know? And I've seen people on your right, and, and good people have, have. And I've seen people on your right and, and good people have, have said dumb things. You know, and you look at them like, so you want to kick them sometimes, but you know, it's, it's, it's a learning process a lot for some people. It's reiterating back and forth every time to go to, if we're going to do a visit, say, remember this, here's a reminder. You know, don't do this, don't do that. I'm fine with that too. I'll take the lead on that. So, but I think that to understand where this department is, we all know where, where, where some of the chokeholds are. We're not there for that. We're there to understand and to make sure that the resource and what we're giving them, we, the needs that the department have is what we're trying to fulfill. And now, is anyone else in the commission wants, want to comment on that? I mean, that's where I am with it. Richard Gates.
Um, I just want to make one comment for whatever it's worth. Many, many years ago, admin did set up a tour of all the stations. I wasn't able to go that day because it was going to be pretty much a full day. But they did take all the commissioners that could go on a tour to show where the stations were, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, something that they did do a number of years ago.
Thank you, Richard Gates. Again, I'm just, I'm, I have to stop here because I want to try to at least formalize with the chiefs, hey chief, here's what we want to do, here's what we want to talk about, here's what we want to look at, assign someone to take a look at, give me something. I want to see you do rescue. I didn't have time. I wasn't here for to see that. I would love to take a tour of that, you know, and individually, like I said, commissioners don't have to go, they don't want to go. Uh, but you're, you're spot on, Squint, about letting even Volkenberg know. I'm coming to the station, who do you want to assign to me? Here's what I want to talk about, no matter how, which way we want to do that. It's not to, is not to undermine his, his authority, not to, not to say that undermine even the B C's that's there, just running the ships. Or not to undermine and, and come back and say, well, this guy talked to me because he knows me. So no. Again, I trust the commission to say to that person, hey, I can't talk to you about that. You know, um, designate that line of where, where business and friendship starts, right? That's what I'm talking about. So. If we want to formalize this, I would like to start doing that, chief, if you want you and I to get together to how you want to do it. If you want to form, if you wanted to something, something else. Again, not every commissioner, if no one wants, if commissioners can individually choose to go one by one, we make sure again that there's no form, there's not anything like that. Make sure we try to keep that perception as low as we can and out of it. I know, Mr. Quinn, that that's going to still be there. I understand. Uh, but again, but I think it's education on the other side to make sure they understand why we're coming in there. And if chief knows why we're coming in there, he can also give heads up to the station, look, they're coming for this. This is it. Or do it right along, great, do it right along. Uh, make sure the officer understands that that's what that person is doing. So, chief, I'll, I kind of leave it up to you with you, your comments. And I know you want to say something.
Well, I think this is a, this is always a difficult topic, right? Because we, we want everyone to be included and we want everyone to have an opportunity to understand what's going on in the department. And we have to be mindful of the guidance from legal and making sure that, you know, we probably need to build a process that includes a notification and we'll just, you know, we, that's probably something that the policy board, we could probably make a recommendation to the policy board and they could make a recommendation to the board.
Agreed.
I think that's a good way to move forward.
Yes. That's why the committee signs are important too, because that, that crossing that bridge like that. And I'm, like I said, chief, want to do a form, however you want to form this, so you know, um, what's going on. And that's the important part of this. So chief, can we kind of finalize that then? You want to get together with the, make sure the policy board, when they get together, talk about this one perception.
Yes, we'll put something together for the policy board.
Thank you, chief. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. So, uh, that being said, we're down to the item number nine, Strategic Bridge Plan Funding Pillar Progress Update.
Uh, good evening, commission. I just want to take a couple of minutes to update you on where we're at with our funding pillar. Um, we did include a draft resolution that was supplied by our legal counsel, Eric Quinn, uh, for hopefully adoption next month. This is what I believe he refers to as an initial imposition, uh, to get it in front of you. Is there any questions, uh, so that you're prepared when we come forward in April? That sets in motion the decision by the board in December of 2023 to, um, find a more sustainable funding option for the fire district. So, uh, more to come on that. Our group meets twice a week. We've put a lot of time and effort into the work that we're doing with our consultant, Cassie Swinson, who happens to be online right now. We're finalizing the key messaging and the education materials. Uh, that will happen. We're all kind of breaking for, uh, spring break here in the next week. But after we return, we hit the ground running again, finalizing key messaging, education stuff and developing the communications plan. And so expect you'll see more and more as we get into April and as we come before the board and, um, at the, at the regular meeting in April for adoption to move forward. Um, that's really when things start to open up and we start having open discussions about what it is we're doing and why we're doing it and educating, uh, our, our staff, educating the commission, educating the public. Lots and lots of work and information forthcoming. Also today, we, we actually sent it to yesterday, but we had to make a correction. Uh, we are proud to say that our second newsletter, uh, was sent to press today and that will hit mailboxes around April 10th or 11th. So a lot of good information in there. And so we're going to keep it going. It's all part of the bridge plan work. Keep communicating with the public, our communities and, um, addressing our needs as a fire district. Any questions?
Any questions from commissioners? Richard Gates.
Maybe it's too early to ask, Joe, but are you going to file for both ballots?
Yes, we will discuss that in April, but that is the plan. And that's what we have done historically, Commissioner.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Director Gamm. That being said, we're down to item 10, which is 647 surplus and sale of the 356 property.
Okay, thank you very much. Resolution number 647, a resolution of the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, authorizing the surplus and sale of property adopted by the Court of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington at a regular meeting this 26th day of March, 2024, with the following commissioners being present and voting.
That being said, I would take a, any, a motion please for Resolution 647.
We move to approve Resolution 467, sorry, 647.
Motion by Medina, is, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Hearing discussion on the motion. Hearing and seeing that, all those in favor say aye. Aye, unanimous, 647 passes. Thank you. Uh, item 11, administrative team report.
Uh, you've all received this month's report. If there's any questions for the team, we'd be happy to answer them.
I just have one, uh, I'll start off with one and Director Gamm. I know you have, uh, you've had the charts on here for a while about the station responses. So can I ask when, at any time, there will be broken down into categories of what they're going to? Case in point, if there's EMS call and you break down the EMS calls into cardiac versus diabetics versus strokes, and what time will, will we maybe start doing that?
So that's actually part of the operations, uh, report. So we have slowly been introducing data into our lexicon for the department. And Maryland's done an awesome job of helping us to start to refine data and as how we present data, both for potential ballot measures, but also for potential accreditation and just so the firefighters know where, how they're performing and what they're doing. We haven't quite gotten to the point of breaking out call types yet. Though one of the next things you'll start to see is turnout time will start to be introduced into the reports and into the dashboards. It's something we can eventually get to. Unfortunately, it's not quite as an easy lift as we might think, but knowing that that's something that the, the commission might want to see, we can start finding ways to create that report. The other part of it is maintaining a balance of how much information is in that report. So, you know, if there's specific things that the commission, the, the board is curious about, you can always email me and we can track down the data. You know, we're, we're pretty consistently 80% EMS and 20% fire responses. As far as the actual breakdown, that's something we can get if that's of interest.
I think, um, for speaking for myself, um, it is to me, as you know, and because it also, um, or locate and, and and when you start going for new stations and things like that, that's, and I think Director Gamm, I had this conversation about data and how important it is to put the station in the right area and right place. When we talk about data and demographics, what calls your folks are going on, what type of calls? And then it comes back again to, I think that, uh, chief crossing the near and I think it goes back to C R R. And that's where that, all that data comes into play. Uh, what can we do to vent this and do that, uh, help Italy, to help folks that don't, uh, English, had a second language? Um, why are our folks as we back in the past, you know, folks that are, are, are from here, eating their homes with, uh, barbecues in their garages and suffering carbon dioxide poisoning and stuff like that, you know? And that, I think that, that, that data is very important. Chief, I know you know that and Director Gamm, I know. So, um, that's why I was just kind of asking that when that breakdown comes, it would be great to see that. So we all know, I mean, um, I, I look at it and I think that Director Gamm knows, I look at things a different eye now. You give me graphs, charts, I start breaking them down to where I will need to understand where some of those components, those types come from. I think it'd be very beneficial for the commission to even understand that too. Thank you. Are there any other questions on our team report? I just wanted congratulations to, um, Shane Smith, uh, because I know that's in here too. And I also want to thank driver operator, the D E S, the driver engineer, Travis McKinney, because I know he put a lot of work in the rig and that's why another reason hazmat was my thing too. And so, believe it or not, sorry, great. I know sometimes it's kind of slow. But we learn, but, uh, so that's very important, but thank you for that. So I just wanted to say that. Um, so, any other questions? If none, we're going to move on to item 12 for the March budget.
Okay, uh, just Commissioner, we appreciate, um, we appreciate, uh, data and we know that Chief Ann Volkenberg has really set the stage for making data-driven decisions, so. Um, so here's some data with some dollar signs. That's, that's in my world. We're doing good. We're a quarter of the way through the year. So at this time, we'd normally be at about, we'd expect to be at 25% of budget. Uh, we are currently at 23 and 65 hundreds of a percent of budget, putting this at 1.35% under for the year. So, starting off the year, um, in a good place. And we did notice that our medical, uh, claims are, are down. It's early in the year. Not everybody's met their deductibles yet. But we had our medical committee meeting this week and we were pleased to see that, um, we're coming in at a good start. So that's the March budget and with the particulars, we have, uh, Matt Reinhardt here tonight.
Thank you, Joseph. Good evening. Uh, mid-month utilities, $82,118.28. Accounts payable, $1,548,910.74. Payroll direct deposit, $1,537,908.15. Payroll taxes, $315,030.64. Medical claims, $144,624.1 with a total approval of $3,628,591.82.
Thank you. Any questions with commissioners on the March budget? Hearing and seeing none, I guess, uh, take a motion to approve the March budget?
I'll move to approve the March budget.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Burris, second to my Commissioner Medina, any other discussion on March budget? Hearing and seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you. Item 13, approval of vouchers. So I do have a question and I know this is, this is also for, for my education. So I noticed that on some of the vouchers, there are, and this is coming to understand where these come from. And I think that one of the questions I was going to ask is that as new commissioners and, and so forth and everyone that comes in, is there a way to be able to get, um, a a class on your budgets, on the different codes and things like that? So we understand, so commissioners understand the budget level. Um, I also say that because on the vouchers, I do know is, um, because I don't know, that's why I'm asking. There are names on here, which I know that have, um, check totals on there. And so what, first of all, are those, do those pertain to?
You're saying, Commissioner, that you recognize names on there?
Yes, I do.
Maybe like retirees from?
Yes, and I kind of figured it had to do something with that.
That's exactly correct. So medical costs that the district is responsible for, for left one employees?
Yes, yes, okay, yeah. And again, I think if you, if you look at the lens of a commissioner coming in and didn't understand that, um, I think it would be who, us to make sure that, um, commissioners do understand those type of things and, and have some type of training on how to read those, what they're for, at least. Because I know that for myself, and I've, I've asked our board secretary, you know, I kind of got the, I wanted the vouchers and things I look at them because it's important to look at and understand them because we vote for them. And it's hard to vote for something and, uh, if I haven't seen it. And so that's the reason why I'm asking to is to make sure that our commissioners have the time to look at these, to understand these. It's hard again, as select officials to vote on something that we don't know, you know, not sure what they're voting on. I don't want that to happen. We are responsible for that. So if there's a way for Canada that the newer folks like myself or anyone else that comes in here can get some type of budget, um, uh, oversight on, or not oversight, but just, just, uh, a training or something on the budget, how everything reads.
More than happy to, uh, do that and working through the fire chief to
Thank you.
To, to make that happen. I, I, I think it's a good idea. And we are audited every year and you, the commissioner, are part of that checks and balances. Uh, so we're more than happy to make sure that you understand what it is that you're approving.
Thank you. This is, sometimes you look at the first, first time I look at these numbers are like, just like, okay, there's codes there, what does that mean? And again, for, for myself, uh, understanding it, I, I do have some sense of reading budgets. But then I'm always thinking about the other folks coming in, right? That don't have that or just like, I don't know what that is. You know, or even folks that are, that do have budget experience and not knowing where the codes are. It's just great to know that. So, thank you. Any other questions for commissioners on the vouchers? I don't have time to look at them, since we've just got them. Okay, all right. Okay, if that's the case, then I will take motion.
I will move the vouchers. Thank you.
Uh, motion by, uh, Commissioner Burr, second to Commissioner Medina, any other discussion on the vouchers? Thank you, I did.
What was it we needed then?
That's approval. So all those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gates. Uh, hearing, seeing the other business. And I just, I just want to, my last comment really is, is I think, and I, I harp on this a little bit, but I know that I sent the, an email to chief and we talked about communication and, and everyone here understands that communication is important. And when we talk about, Mr. Quinn, you talk about going to fire stations and things. I always think that, that we need to police ourselves in a way and to make sure that we communicate in direct and in a proper manner. And so I say this out loud because I, again, I trust the commission to do what we need to do if we're doing station visits, but I also make sure that we want to communicate our intentions. That's what we're doing. So thank you for that. And with that, and no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you.